...the zoning commission. First item will be to do the pledges of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we have no minutes this time. It's on the consent. Oh, so we do have minutes. A motion, so I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. First item on the consent agenda other than minutes is case file number 2025-02P. This property is in the ETJ. It's a motion to consider approving what staff's recommended conditions for a proposed preliminary plat of roadless subdivision, subdivision of 4.81 acres in section 10, block 43, T2STMP Railway Company Survey. Property generally located on the north side of Meadow Park Lane. Anybody have any issues, motions?
I move to approve case file number 2025-02-P in the ETJ.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Next two matters are public hearing matters. The first was case file number 2025-03Z. Open a public hearing to consider approval of the request of S-31B-42 LLC for a zone change from future development to light industrial on a 41.44 acre tract of land situated in the southeast quarter, section 31, block 42, T2S, 10 P Railway Company Survey. Property being generally located on the east side of Southwest Loop 338. Yes ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner and members, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. We sent out notifications to the surrounding property owners. There were four sent out, zero denied, zero approved, and zero returned. The applicant, S-31B-42 LLC, is requesting a zone change from future development district to light industrial. The property involved in this request is located on the east side of Southwest Loop 338, and the site is currently designated future development district and is vacant land and undeveloped. The applicant and owner, S-31B-42 LLC, is seeking a zone change for future proposal of a light industrial development in the area. Using the city's identified priorities contained in the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan to evaluate zoning amendments, the following comments are offered. For comprehensiveness, this request is not out of line of the City of Odessa's plan to evaluate zoning and amendments, I'm sorry, to evaluate, excuse me, I lost my place. This request is not out of line with the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan. The property is located near light industrial zoning districts. For livability, the proposed zoning would not have a negative impact on this site or surrounding properties. The property presented in this request is located away from residential development and is in an area that is largely industrial. For reasonableness, the proposed zoning district will be encircled by existing industrial development and will facilitate a compatible development to the existing land uses in the area. Based upon the preceding analysis, staff recommends approval of this request and is subject to condition A, which is to adhere to light industrial district zoning standards. And I'm here for any questions.
Are there any questions, staff? Okay, if there are no questions, staff, then I would note that this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience today that's here to speak in favor of or in opposition to this case, now it's time to come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public portion of this matter and turn to the commission for discussion or a motion.
I move to approve.
The motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you, matter passes. Moving on to case file number 2025-05Z. This is a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of Lico Energy and Investments Incorporated for a zone change from special dwelling district drilling reservation to special dwelling district on a 4.88 acre tract of land in section 2, block 42, T2S, 10 P Railway Company Survey. This property is situated on the northwest corner of the intersection of Boise Drive and North Grandview. Yes ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. There were nine notices sent, zero returned, zero approved, and zero protests. The applicant, Lico Energy and Investments, is requesting a zone change from SPDDR, Special Dwelling District Reservation, Drill Reservation, to SPD, Special Dwelling District. They did submit a mineral, I'm sorry, a lease agreement where it releases it from the drill site. And I have it with me if you'd like to take a look. It was presented to Lico and they have approved it. They indicated that based on their submission that they would allow or they would be, they have met the requirement to release the drill site. The property involved in this request is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Boise Drive and North Grandview Avenue. The site is currently designated Special Dwelling District Drill Reservation and is currently vacant and undeveloped. The applicant is Lico Energy and Investments Incorporated with LCA agent, is seeking a zone change for the purpose of creating residential development in the area. Using the city's identified priorities contained in the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan to evaluate zoning amendments, the following comments are offered. For comprehensiveness, this request is not out of line with the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan. The property is located near, near two lots allowing for similar uses. For livability, the proposed zoning would not have a negative impact on this site or surrounding properties. The proposed residential development is not out of line with development in the area. For reasonableness, the proposed zoning district will facilitate a reasonable transition between land uses of varying intensities and will not create a conflict to the existing land uses in the area. Based upon the preceding analysis, staff recommends approval of the request subject to conditions A and B. A, a zone change approval contingent upon plat approval and recrodation. And B, to adhere to SPD, Special Dwelling District zoning standards. And I'm here for any questions.
All right, any questions?
So, I have a question. So, it is an active drill site now?
It is a, it is considered a drill reservation. It has been released. The drill has been released, so it is allowed, with the release, it is allowed to, to drop off the drill reservation designation. Any, I'm assuming that any well site will, will be plugged and will be available for residential development.
Okay, good. Just a second, sure.
And the property will be platted for residential lots?
Yes, correct.
Only, you're right.
Good.
Yes. Yeah, since it's being approved for special dwelling district, it will be residential only. Okay, I would note, if there are no other questions of staff, I would note that this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here today that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to this case? Come forward and give us your name, please.
Yeah, I'm Brian Dink, 7803 Socorro Drive. It is one property north of the proposed development. My big concern is we got two different notices in the mail with two slightly different areas of operation. This is the second survey, I believe. The first one has that green line, the northwest corner of it, that actually extends onto my property and my neighbor's property, Richard McPaul Boulevard. And so I wanted to, like I said, there was two notices sent for the same plan, and I think the first one may have been an error with that extra green extension on the top left because the second one did not have it. I'm just trying to get clarification on that.
Okay, I think that the first notice you got was for a zone change, zoning change.
Okay.
That property was a drill site and now they're asking for it to be used for residential. The second notice is actually a copy of the plat that the developer intends to use in order to put new homes on that property. And I think the tail up there on the, the left side,
Yeah.
that's just the way the original drill site was, was drawn.
Yes, so the original drill site had that little tail up to the north. So when we did the zoning, when we brought the zoning, they requested to have it zoned altogether. To me, they're the same, to be similar in zoning to the top.
So that doesn't affect ownership at all, maybe, if it's rezoning?
No, it's just rezoning.
Okay.
It should not negatively impact your property at all.
Great. But it's also zoning him for, for dwelling, right? That either you're moving the drill site out of there, then it's, it's zoned just for dwelling.
Yeah, it's but.
Your horizontal drilling, they don't necessarily need that, that property anymore.
So we have to incorporate that middle spot there, so it wants to.
So they want to be a little slimmer.
Yes.
Great question. Thanks for coming.
You're good.
Okay, anyone else in the audience today that would like to speak in favor of and opposition or have questions concerning this matter? Please come forward, just give us your name.
Good afternoon, my name is Caesar Middin, I live on 2206 Boise Drive. Just to make a point, looking at the map there, the top left corner of it, that's actually property belonging to the last two houses on the Socorro area. They have been extended out, so that section that are you looking at on the top left, it's not even part of that plot anymore.
Okay, I don't think I'm following you.
Are you talking about the zoning things or the plot? Because there's two cases being presented. One is the zoning, which covers the, encompasses all that area, two is that all one zoning district.
Okay.
Or there's a plat that only delivers, what's the owner? What's the owner of the property, the older end? And it's not fully encompassing any other things, what the other ones are.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience that is here today to speak about case file number 2025-05Z? If there's not, I'll close the public hearing, turn to the commission, ask if there's any further discussion, comments, or a motion.
I move to approve case file number 2025-05-Z.
Okay, that's a motion to approve the zoning part. There is a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you, motion passes. Under miscellaneous section, we have several cases. The first is case number 2025-13P. This involves road dedication plat of Midway Boulevard and Mission Drive. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman and Commission. The applicant and owner, DJK Incorporated with LCA, is seeking to plat to dedicate right of ways for Mission Boulevard from Deer Meadows, first filing to Midway Boulevard, formerly known as New Road 4, and Midway Boulevard from Yukon Road Rightof Way to County Road 122 West Rightof Way, known as Bankhead Highway. We routed this throughout every department. Staff recommends approval of the primary plat of Midway Boulevard and Mission Drive, subject to condition A through D. We're now open for questions.
Any questions, staff? If there are no questions, you have a comment. Please come forward and give us your name.
Good afternoon, Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Gracie Rodriguez, LCA, 521 North Texas. I'd like to address the removal of the, the first portion of the title for this plat so that it may be recognized as road dedication plat of Midway Boulevard and Mission Drive. The reason for this is if we remove preliminary road dedication plat, then that means this will be recorded as Midway Boulevard and Mission Drive. All previous road dedications do reflect the word specifically road dedication plat of, and so we're requesting to have that kept as part of this particular road dedication.
Okay, staff?
So, we can, it is possible to just remove the preliminary title but indicate road dedication plat of. I know that we have done that in previous plots when it comes to road dedications. So, we can, we can remove the preliminary and just leave it as road dedication plat of and the continuation of what she has up there or what the plat indicates up there, which is.
So what I'm looking at on the screen, we would remove just the word preliminary?
Correct.
And we'd need a motion to do that?
It's, we would just amend condition B to remove the preliminary and just indicate road dedication plat and, and voice the, the title, which would be road dedication plat of Midway Boulevard and Mission Drive.
Repeat that again.
So, the conditions will be approved with an amendment to B, to remove preliminary and indicate the plat to be, road dedication plat of Midway Boulevard and Mission Drive.
Do you got that?
So we're going to remove preliminary and add dedication?
Road dedication plat of.
Road dedication.
Midway Boulevard and Mission Drive.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion or motion?
Motion to approve with the amendment changes.
Yeah, the motion is your second.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes with the amendment. We are now on case file number 2025-14P. This involves the staff's recommended conditions for a proposed preliminary plat of S-31B-42 LLC addition, being the same 41.44 acre tract that we discussed earlier. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owner, S-31B-42 LLC, with their consultant, Maverick Engineering, is seeking to plat to create 14 lots for industrial development purposes. This proposed development will include a well site and a retention. Planning staff has received no internal objections and therefore we do recommend approval of the preliminary plat of S-31B-42 LLC addition, subject to the conditions A through Q listed below. We are now open for any questions. Thank you.
You mentioned there is a well site there, is that well site active?
No, it's the same one.
It's the same one?
It's in it, it's that same one that I asked about.
Actually, I, I do believe it's, it was in the first zone change case. I think it's a different case that we're. Okay.
Oh, okay.
Can I retract that?
I thought it was.
Lot of conditions, no pushback from the owner, the consultant?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
See, there were, there were a lot of conditions that were listed, that A through Q. There was no pushback from the developer?
At this time, I, I don't believe so. This is preliminary, so these, of course, have been returned to them for adjustment for final.
I'm sorry, so it is an active well site or?
No.
No, you can't build on an active drill site. So, it's, it's an active well site?
It is an active well site?
I think it is. I'm not sure, and I'm sorry, I don't think we have knowledge of that.
Just making sure, because they're going to have trouble building.
You can't, you can't get a loan on an active well site?
So that one has been, they are not going to build in that area.
Right.
Okay, so they are only gonna, they are replating only or plating only the properties around it and continuing the, leaving the well site alone.
Okay.
Does it have a pad, do you know if it has an exterior pad of, of the well site?
We haven't visited the area.
I want to, I want to say there's actually a, a pump jack on there. I could be wrong.
Because they're going to measure from the pad to the home.
Right.
To be able to get a loan, so that might be an issue.
So there's a pad, but I don't see a.
Pump jack, anything?
I don't see a.
It does have a gravel pad, I can see a little bit. Okay. But on this, so on this suggested, it does have some lots there, so they're, they're just not going to build on those?
They're not going to build on that center one that's indicated as well site. They're going to build around it.
Because the one just across, I think it's number six, they'll probably have trouble getting a loan and the one across is number five on Mary Street, that would probably be an issue.
That's the way that developer wants to plat it.
Okay.
But it's not our issue.
Yeah, that's how they're choosing to, that's how they're choosing to plat this property.
If there was a larger well site, it's been reduced down to the existing well site that's less than an acre of land that's showing on this preliminary plat.
Correct.
And I think you've asked if that plat, that, that well site be given its own lot number.
Yes, we did, we did request to have its own lot number, mainly because to make sure that it's on the, the recording. And they will indicate that it's a well site as well, so.
Okay.
But as a preliminary plat, all the lots meet size requirements, they all have access to public thoroughfares, is that correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Any other questions, staff? Okay, stands for further discussion or motion?
So?
Have a motion for approval?
Mm-hmm, motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion for second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. I only heard one aye. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, I think. You get, you get enough ayes?
You got three.
Three, so who's the names?
Okay, motion did pass. We're now on case file number 2025-15P. This is the proposed preliminary plat of Desert Ridge, second filing, phase nine, being 4.01 acres of lands in section 2, block 42, T2S, 10 P Railway Company Survey, properties at the intersection of E-61st Street and Blue Bell Drive. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman and Commission. The applicant and owner, Lico Energy and Investments, with consultant LCA, is seeking to plat to create 23 lots for future residential development. We routed the project throughout each department. Staff recommends approval of the primary plat of Desert Ridge, second filing, phase nine, subject to condition A through F. We're now open for questions.
Any questions? If there are no questions, then I'll turn to the staff and ask for discussion or a motion.
I move to approve, I move to approve case file number 2025-15-P.
Connie moved, is there a second?
I'll second, okay.
We've got two seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Number eight on the agenda is case file number 2025-17P. This is replat of lot one, block one, Kenzie Edition, being a 0.379 acre tract of land in section 26, block 42, T2S, 10 P Railway Company Survey. Properties located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Electric Street and Wabash Avenue. Yes, sir.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owner, LT Hunter Properties LLC, with consultant Piper Surveying Co. Incorporated, is seeking to replat one lot into three lots for residential development. This replat request has received no objections and therefore the planning staff does recommend approval of the replat, subject to conditions A through E. We are now open for questions. Thank you.
Somebody ask them a question, something hard, difficult. If there are no questions of staff, then I would ask, does anyone have a motion or some matter to discuss?
I'll make a motion to approve.
How much for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that matter passes, and we'll go now to case file number 2025-18P. This is the replat of Desert Ridge, second filing, phase 10, being a replat of lot 51, block 3, Desert Ridge, fifth filing, located section 2, block 42. It's generally located at the intersection of Boise Drive and Grandview. Let's take a copy.
Thank you, Chairman and Commission. The applicant and owner, Lico Energy Investments Incorporated LLC, with consultant LCA, is seeking to replat to create 21 lots for ownership purposes. We sent out 51 notices, received two denials. We routed this out throughout each department. Staff recommends approval of Desert Ridge, second filing, phase 10, subject to condition A through F. We're now open for questions.
Yeah, two denial, two protests?
Oh, push.
Any questions, staff? All right, I will turn to the commission and see if anybody's got anything to talk about, or is there a motion?
So move.
A motion for approval, Mr. Cleaver, is there a second? Second by Connie, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes, going on case file number 2025-19P. Replat of Parks Bell Ranch North, 10th filing, being a replat of lot 12, block 4, Parks Bell North Ranch, North, Parks Bell Ranch North, second filing. Property generally located southeast corner of the intersection of King Ranch Road and East Circle Crossroad. Yes, sir.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owner, 2012 Crosby, with consultant LCA, is seeking to replat one lot into two lots for ownership purposes. This replat request has been routed internally and has received no objections from departments and therefore the planning staff recommends approval of this replat request for replat Parks Bell Ranch North, 10th filing, subject to conditions A through G. We are now open for any questions. Thank you.
Anybody got questions? Uh-oh, there's trouble. Yes, ma'am. And you're with the consultant?
Good afternoon, P and Z Commissioners. My name is Gracie Rodriguez with LCA, 521 North Texas Avenue, Odessa, Texas. The reason for my approaching of the bench is to be able to address, comment, I'm sorry, condition B in hopes for it to be amended as we will be consistent with what the Texas State Code requires in titling for this particular replat. So the titling will reflect that it is a replat of, and then of course what that previous title was.
So where are you going to put replat? Desert Ridge, second filing, phase 10?
Replat a second filing? How do you do that?
So it'll read Parks Bell Ranch North, 10th filing, being a 2.2 acre tract located in section 45, block 41, T1STMP Railroad Company Survey, Odessa, Ector County, Texas, being a replat of lot 12, block 4, Parks Bell Ranch North, second filing, as described in cabinet C, pages 62C of the Ector County plat records.
That's, that's what I, that's what it reads.
So B is requiring for us to amend that to what B says.
So you want to keep it?
You want to add replat to B, correct?
Yes.
No, she's.
We're wanting to keep it as, as shown on the plat. If you look two pa, two pages over, that's the, the titling that we're hoping to be able to have passed instead of amending to remove the word replat.
Staff, you got any objections?
It's tiny, but it's right here. It's tiny, but it's right here.
So, if anything, I believe that this will promote, leaving it in the way that we current, I'm sorry, so leaving it in the way that we currently have it proposed, I think is really gonna assist, not just for today's time, but for those that are gonna end up replating this in the future. This is really gonna help, how do I say, eliminate the risk of improper titling, along with improper research.
And I will second your motion for improper research, because it's something I, as a title examiner I run into, from time to time, I'll say that similar legal description, and the only way I know it's not, identifies different property is that there's a reference to a replat.
Correct, correct. So, this is our, our proactive, proactiveness in, in future, down the line replats.
Thank you.
Can we go back to the condition again? Okay, so, Ms. Rodriguez, you're, you're saying you don't want it to be condition B written that way? You want it to, you want to call it out with the acreage, or you just want to say it's a replat of, the name of the replat only?
It would actually include the replat along with the cabinet filing designation, which is on the proposed preliminary that, that we currently have on screen.
Do you want it to say being the 2.2 acre tract of?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes. So, we wouldn't remove anything that you guys are proposing, but if anything, we would like to be able to add more information, more identifying information.
I see.
Yes, again, for that proactiveness for future replating if needed.
I don't see any, from my experience doing plats over the years, I don't see any issue with that, as long as it's a secondary statement. So, as long as it's, we know it's the Park Bell Ranch, tenth filing, and we know that it's a replat of whatever it is, if they wanna add that in, I, I don't think there's anything inappropriate about that.
Add being, being a replat, 2.2 acre tract.
They want to add all this on top of that.
Okay.
On top of that, yeah.
Well, it's already in there being a 2.2 acre tract, it's already in there.
But there's.
She's adding the.
Well, because there, there's. Or, or, as a suggestion, would it be feasible to be able to just strike the comment, since if anything, we're adding more information instead of removing anything?
I guess that would be fine.
Yeah.
Okay, somebody got a motion on that?
With the, with the amendment to add replat?
They're still talking.
But the replats are in there, I think.
Yeah, the replats are in there.
But she wants to add it to B.
No, she, the B in a 2.2.
So, are you good with just striking B off of the?
Uh, yes.
So, we just need to add the.
Being a replat, I'm sorry.
It's already, the being a 2.2 acre tract is already on there, right?
Parks Bell Ranch North, tenth filing.
You just have to add the B, and we're adding the.
The replat portion of it.
Yeah.
So, we can amend this to, to indicate what, Parks Bell Ranch North, tenth filing, a replat, a replat of 22 acre lot? Yes, 20, replat of 20, 22, or 2.2 acre tract located in section 46, 41, T1S and TMP Railroad Company Survey, Odessa, Ector County, Texas. The, we can actually, I think the only indication there would have to be to consider the replat of Parks Bell Ranch North, tenth filing, being a replat of 2.2 acre tract, correct?
Yes, that's right. The simplest thing is just strike that comment B.
Okay.
The title as is is fine.
Okay. Okay, just remove B.
So, I need a, I need a motion to approve.
Remove it now.
To strike B. Do you have that motion?
I'll make a motion to remove the condition B, and, and there, and approve it as, everything else is the way it's presented.
Second. I'd like to approve as presented, with the exception that B removed, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, we're down to case file number 2025-20P, property's in the ETJ. This involves a replat of lot 14, block 18, Westland Subdivision, second filing, subdivision 4.13 acres in section 17, block 43, T2S, TDP Railway Company Survey, property generally located southwest corner of the intersection of West Bradley Drive and North Eagles Nest. Yes, sir?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owner, Felix Rodriguez, with consultant SW Howell Incorporated, is seeking to replat one lot into five lots for ownership purposes. Respective department comments are below. We've received no internal objections to the replat request, and therefore we do recommend approval of the replat of lot 14, block 18, Westland Subdivision, second filing, subject to conditions A through E. We are now open for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions?
I move to approve case file number 2025-20-P in the ETJ.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, in favor?
Second, favor.
All right, done.
Easy, man.
All right, wasn't too bad.